All right, it is by 3:00. A meeting to order. Um, let's see. Welcome, you must be Joel. I'm sorry, I'm trying to focus on resetting my email password here. And I'm sorry, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Um, let's go around the room and do introductions. I'm Courtney Johnson of the mayor.
I'm Chrissy Mock, city council.
Craig Jensen, transportation planning manager of Scott County.
Usually at meetings.
One of these things would not like the other.
Yep. Looks like you're out the head. Erin Smith, we already talked, assistant city engineer.
I'm Laurie Sayer, county council.
Eric Purishman, also in the city council.
Hi Joel.
I am Erin Smith, I'm the community development director for the city.
I'm Brenda Weefman.
Casey Black, as our consulting group working with Scott County.
Uh, Riebel, Carver city council.
Do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself? Do you want to jump right into Two Truths and a Lie? I know everybody really looks forward to that.
Sure, I can kind of tell you a little bit about myself. Um, I, let's see, I went to Bethel University. I have a bachelor's in psychology. I went to school to be a police officer after that. And I started as a police officer in 2017 in the city of Los St. Paul. Before that, I was a community service officer in the city of St. Louis Park and a reserve police officer in the city of Columbia Heights. And that's where I grew up, actually. I have three kids. My husband is also a police officer in the city of St. Louis Park. And I've been with the county for, in a couple days, it'll be my year at Carver County, so.
Awesome, welcome to the city of Carver.
Thank you.
I always like to play Two Truths and a Lie. I might be the only one who enjoys it, but I think it just provides a better way of getting to know you.
Sure, I was, I was told about this ahead of time.
Okay, good.
All right, so, um, I let's, I played varsity hockey as a ninth grader. I have been to 13 different countries and I'm a vegetarian.
You can tell she's a cop. She does eye contact things, so she doesn't push away.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Which ones do you love?
So you got it with your fingers, which one do you think is a lie? Everybody can play. Not many folks think you're a vegetarian. It's a little across the board, which one's a lie?
I am not a vegetarian. I've never been told that.
You ever tell?
You need health and investigations. Well, welcome.
Thank you, I'm happy to be here.
Excited to have you. Um, I know we've got a great relationship with our town cops, so excited to put a face to the emails.
Absolutely.
And what, um, what hours are you working right now?
I work Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. every other Saturday.
And is that the split between?
Team one, team, uh, sorry, no, I, all those days, I'm, I'm split between Victoria and Carver.
Okay, so say it one more time.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and every other Saturday.
Okay.
Thanks, yep.
Great.
I think I'd be remiss, but just want to extend on behalf of the city, how difficult it must be for you and your colleagues with what's gone on recently in Green Mill. And that we want to thank you for the courage and commitment it takes to do that every day, so thank you.
Thank you very much, much appreciated.
Yes, my friend said, thank you. With that, we have a riveting meeting tonight, work session talking about the Scott County project, Merriam-Jonction Trail. You're welcome to stay. But if you have other things. If you have other things to do, I certainly understand.
Well, it is my day off. And my kids would love to.
Go, go, go! Maybe you can be home.
Thank you. Thank you all for having me. That was fantastic, I really appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Kevin.
All right, um, up next.
Do you want me to pull it up for you?
I wasn't sure if it was preloaded, but if you got it.
I'll, I'll pull it up.
Uh, up next is the Merriam-Jonction Trail project presentation by Scott County.
I'm gonna, wait, throw it over to Erin, just to give a little kind of lead in and then introduce our friends from Scott County.
Yep, so, uh, obviously everyone knows it's a very exciting project that's gonna impact the region, but the city has been doing a lot of work with Scott County and SRF over the last year with the Merriam-Jonction Trail project that touches down in the city of Carver on the city's levy system. So, um, just really working together and figuring out what the alignment's gonna be, determining the elevations that need to be achieved to accommodate the future levy project going forward. So, just a lot of detailed coordination. Most recently, we've been talking a lot about the staging of the project, how to get equipment and trucks and everything in and out of the city of Carver. So, a lot of information's gonna be shared tonight as it relates to that. So, I think with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Craig and Casey to kick off the presentation. I'll flip through slides for you and jump in as needed, so.
Okay. Well, again, Craig Jensen, transportation planning manager of Scott County. And this is something that's been going on and brewing for quite some time, and we're really excited to get this thing to fruition here. Now, our trail is, first kind of was discussed when the abandonment came up in, what, 2007? When the train fell in the, in the river. So that really started, kicked off that. And in 2010, working with Carver County, Scott County acquired jointly the rail line, Union Pacific rail line. Since then, Carver County has built their portion of the trail. And now really it's our turn to kind of build our commitment to build the other portion of the trail. Twenty, late 2020, when we, during COVID, when we kicked off the design process of this to figure out what we need, and as mentioned, we're in a river valley. It's floods, we're, we were kind of going through trying to figure out what elevation does that trail have, or need to be at? What are the bridges needed to be at, at what height and stuff? So, um, in late 22, 2022, is when we received some federal funding, and that really kicked into, into high gear because now we have to meet all the standard, the federal standards to get this thing through. And we've looked at many, many options for this. The line is two miles, over two miles long. It has four total bridges, one being the Minnesota River, but we have three other bridges as well on our side. And it's, it's really something that we've, it, we, we had some top people at SRF that have been helping us, and they even say it's one of the most complicated projects. So they've had to deal with, because we're in this, this narrow river valley with not a lot of room to move. Usually we're building roads, the stuff's already there, or it's a trail, it's on the side of a road. So we're, we're kind of in this, this new area of, you know, this bad soils and flooding rivers and dealing with all those, those issues. So, um, the connections, also, it starts really at the south end of, at the wild, U.S. Fish and Wildlife parking lot that's on our end. If you can point to it, the dot there, yeah. And then continues north, and that's really the, the trail. There's one private property owner, the rest of it is owned by the county, and then it's also surrounded by DNR property as well. We looked at several alignments for the bridge itself, crossing the river, and one of the things was, why don't we use the old historic where it landed? Well, because we have a historic bridge, we are not wanting to impact that historic bridge. And so we looked at other locations and the selection, the position we selected really lands kind of just, I guess, west of Broadway or north of Broadway, I guess, the direction. But it really helps with the, um, the, the river and how it flows and that it's not going to erode the piers, the bridge piers. So, kind of went through that whole process to figure out different locations where it could land and the whole hydrology. And, and so really it comes in right to downtown. And we, we are, we're excited about this and we think it'll be a, a good amenity to downtown Carver as well. Moving to the next slide.
When did we take that bridge down? What year was that? Was it finished in 2012-ish?
Through the acquisition of it, we, the UPUs were committed to taking.
Yeah, United proper, Union Pacific took the bridge down.
Right, I just can't remember.
Early 2010s.
Yeah, yeah, we acquired in 2010, so maybe it was 11 or 12 by the time we got that done. So, not only the city of Carver, but we've been working closely with Carver County. We've been working with Louisville Township. We've been working closely with DNR and Fish and Wildlife as we impact those properties as well. So it's a real partnership approach to this whole overall project to get this accomplished. And there's been a lot of, a lot of hurdles environmentally. You know, we have been doing a lot and lot of investigation in this area. There's fads, there's, in the, in the area, we've had to locate those things. There's, there's fads, there's archaeology, there's some other threatened plant species that we had to kind of make sure that we were identifying out there and avoiding. So, um, it, it was a real coordinated effort to try to get that through. Next one. So, as mentioned, it lands just kind of, it's the north of Broadway. And this is kind of a today picture where we have the trees and then we look to the, kind of the rendering of, of the future bridge location. And it's just, um, something where, I'm guessing the colors, we're, we just selected it so I don't know if it's, uh, the full true color, but that's kind of what we're, we're looking at. It's a steel bridge, it's over 600 feet long, so it's a big, it's a big bridge to get, to get across the river and go to the est. And then that's the other rendering of it. It'll have two, two piers in, in the river and the abutment. This is on the Carver County side looking across to Scott County. Next picture. And then this was just an example of, I know the garage is in the way, but that's kind of today's view, what, what it would, kind of just sneaks in there, I guess, right now. But we know there's other plans for that, that area. I don't know, this next picture, which is the, the downtown park concept. And kind of right about where that hand is cursor somewhere where it says existing trail, that's about where the bridge would land. And again, it was selected for hydrology and it's, it assists the, with, hopefully to avoid some of those, those issues that come along with having a pier in the river. So that's, we've been trying to coordinate that and we know that, that this can kind of build on, on that as well. Next, next one. Communication, how we want to kind of roll this out to, or at least how we initially thought about it and we're here to, to listen to you and, and get your input as well. One of the things we wanted to have was an open house before the, the construction begins. And what I say is, is we want to have the contractor on board so that we truly know what to expect. Because right now, we're, we're thinking how it's gonna work, but the contractor may, they can be very creative, especially when, when it comes to maybe delivering projects faster or, or, you know, saving some money on, on some of these, these issues. So, what we want to be is, we don't want to have any false message as well to folks. We want to have a clear message of what, what is gonna go and how it's gonna go. And so, you know, we have a schedule that we're laying out, but it's our, kind of our best attempt, our best, you know, schedule that we can put forward right now. However, again, it's the, the contractor's gonna really help, help us with that. We can do some newsletters and get out to residents in the area. We'll have web, website and we'll, that you'll be able to link to our website or however else we can do that. We can do some postings of it. Right now, I'm the project manager for the design portion of it by Kyle Sammons is listed. He will help through the construction portion of it and he's a, he's an actual project manager with, with Scott County. And we'll have other folks on, on board as well, consultant helping with some of the, some of the updates as well. And then, how do we, how do we build this? And this is something that, as mentioned, that there's been a lot of coordination. And, um, you know, usually the, you know, when, when engineers kind of look at it, they're thinking, oh, the easiest way is a straight line, it's right there. So, but we initially, you know, through discussion, worked with the city staff to come up with this is the least impactful that we could find to the downtown area of, of Carver. And that we would be able to come off of just north of Casey's, down the trail. And then what we need to do is we need to construct what we call causeway to get out to the center piers. And so that causeway will come across right there. That would enable the contractor to have access to the, the piers to build them. And so that access along Casey's is actually a one-way traffic, so they'll have to monitor that themselves on allowing access and, and making sure that, you know, two trucks don't, can't meet on the trail, so.
Is that causeway, you're gonna build an earthen causeway blocking the river? Or will the river still be passing?
It'll have to convey some water. Casey, I don't know what you're thinking would be for conveyance.
Yeah, there'll be some minimum size to a temporary bridge as a part of that causeway. So it should, it's fully solid right now, but there'll be a requirement for the contractor to provide some continuous flow. And then it's usually constructed at a lower flood stage. I think here we're thinking maybe the two to three-year flood event. So there are provisions in the contract that will be put in for the contractor to hold that temporary bridge too, so it isn't washed downstream in higher flood events.
Great, I'm anticipating my next question. Well done. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, with that, um, the red and blue line on there is because we'd be working on the trail area that we would allow, have a kind of a signed detour route for pedestrians and bikes to get around the construction area. Also, as part of that, we really need to, um, do work in Riverside Park. And that is going to cause, cause us to close that park area to, to access. Now, um, what's that duration? You know, I think we are putting a, a, our best conservative guess at it right now. Not guess, but you know, what we feel would be, making sure that, to deliver the project. But again, I think, you know, contractor, maybe he's a little more savvy, can maybe see if we can, we can cut that down. Or if we end up with a bad flood issue, that it could go a little longer. I mean, we're trying to really hone in on what we feel has the, has appropriate long working days on it. So, the area is kind of in the red hash, it would be kind of some, some areas that would be closed to the, at least the everyday public use. But we'll be working primarily down in the causeway to build that, so. But we're trying to, to limit kind of the mixing of pedestrians and the big vehicles out there.
Do you know you're gonna need the staging area for the other bridges that are constructed? Or is it just mainly for the, the Carver Bridge?
It's just the Carver.
Okay.
Now, we'll have to find a place on our side of the river for, for a station area. But again, it's, it's big steel beam that we have to bring in. They'll have to, to work on. There'll probably be some other materials or even just to, to park vehicles overnight or, you know. So, you know, have some, some cranes and, and stuff that may need to relocate if it's a flooding event.
Because part of that obviously backs up the houses. Are we gonna, is the timeframe for construction the same as every, every other project we do in town? Like the hours of construction?
Which part are you talking about?
Are that, for the project, are the hours of construction?
Seven a.m.
Yeah, so the, so the, it would have to be coordination with the city engineer because, you know, they're, for the most part, yes, but if there is some unique construction event where they'd like to try to get something done to kind of help everybody, you know, that's something that Erin and Dan have traditionally reviewed and then we communicated out to the council and to the public that.
It could be on occasion, but it's.
On occasion, yeah, but like, on a routine basis, yeah, construction's not gonna be starting at 6:00 a.m., but with all our regular construction.
Yeah, and that's not, you know, different than any other city we work in for a road project, so we'd be subject to the city requirements there.
Actually, you have a lot of leeway because it's a city project. I mean. But, or.
Work within the city, work within the city limits, though, is subject to the ordinances of the city.
Yeah.
And any changes of that would have to be approved by the city engineer. So, so they would have to coordinate with us on that. If for some reasons they're saying, you know, hey, we, we really like to work this night because if we do this, then it's gonna save us, you know, a week on the schedule because there's, there's snow coming or something.
Can we have some guidelines? I know we talked about this in a, in a meeting, just initially looking at it, you know, where it's not gonna be, would it be three out of four weekends? Or like X percent of time or, I mean, because it could really get out of hand.
Yeah, I think that would be like the, we would, we plan to do regular, I would say, construction updates for the council, you know, through, you know, you know, area would be connected in with Craig and Casey. And, you know, we would share modifications to schedule. And so, hopefully we don't put you in a position where it feels like it has been three out of the four weekends that like you have continuous line of sight. And if you feel like we're trending, that you can give Erin or Dan some different direction on how you'd like to see the project managed. But I'd be hesitant to try to make, put together guidelines in advance without knowing the total dynamics of the project.
And without a contractor on board, we don't even know if they even need the extra time or not, so. Good. So with that, we are looking, because of the, we have some bad restrictions with our project, we are subject to having clearing done by the end of March. Now, we're not gonna do all the tree clearing, but we feel that on the Carver side, that it makes sense to do some of that tree clearing so that we can get in and get the bridge work done this fall, or even started this fall versus waiting till November. And then you lose those few months, so we feel that we can get in there earlier to, to tree clear and, and that would kind of be like the first thing that could, could happen on the project to get in and get out of there. Because we know the city is planning the levy construction and that we want to make sure that we're not in conflict as well and we're working together on that. So, again, had a lot of, a lot of conversation trying to, to kind of, kind of wrangle this all together and try to, it's very complicated to get this all together. And so then, again, this fall is when we really think that the project will, will get on, on its way. Again, probably once we have a contractor on board and before they start, have a, have that open house that we're communicating out to folks what expectations are on that. And they could throw a curveball at us and say, we're not gonna start till the fall here. I don't know, you know, but we, we, we really don't know. But we're, we're, we're feeling that, we're feeling confident that we'll, that this makes the most sense because of one of that, that bad restriction and we can't clear everything. And we can't even clear all the trees on our side because, because we have wetlands in the river that we need to get around right now. And so we can't even get out there and finish all that. We can finish, we can get to a certain point for our tree clearing on our side.
I have a big question. So Stevo Days, that's where we light the fireworks off from, it's on our riverside. Has, are we going to be able to do that down there?
Yeah, you'll still be able to, access that road would be there. I mean, there'd be some obstacles, but I'm sure we can make arrangements to make sure that there is some access.
Okay, because it's, they're nor, they're set on the river side of the road by the campsites.
Yep.
And I'm not gonna have to, I'm just saying, I know for them, that's the area that works for them and that's where they've always set up.
There might be an elevation change depending upon, I don't know the exact location, if it's on the campsites or closer.
It's on, it's like between two and three.
So the campsites, we're not touching the campsites.
So that site isn't okay. Okay, and then for scheduling, because of so much going on, it would, it would be great if they probably didn't do construction that Friday of Stevo Days. Because that's a lot of.
It's just people, traffic.
And people.
That's a good question.
Stevo Days is the weekend after Labor Day.
Yeah, it's early, right?
It's early numbers this year, like eight or something like that, September. I'm gonna say my question's to the end, so.
I guess, just, just kind of mention the schedule itself. We envision that the, the work in Carver would wrap up in 2026. We would try to restore the park to kind of that before condition so that we are not leaving a mess out there. And, you know, I really, we know that the levy project's right behind that, so again, we're trying to get out of the way of that. We still have probably another year on our side to finish our bridges and the trail. So, quite a long project, but we will be, the major work will be, will be out of there, so.
So when you pull out on June 1st of 2026, will the bridge be open across the river?
Well, we won't be complete on our end, so I don't see the, the, I guess, the needs right now to open it because what we did, and there will probably still be some finishing work, maybe some landscape, and turf establishment and other things that we are still working on.
If you're open to consideration, I see folks wanting to meander with a cup of coffee or ice cream cone and maybe not going any further, maybe not touching Scott County soil even, but just to walk across the river and meander.
I mean, if you can close it at the Scott County junction, right, you know, when you hit Scott County across the river, people I'm sure are going to be very excited to.
Yeah.
See, after two years, they're gonna wanna get tan on that bridge and look at the river.
The only thing I'll add to that is that depending on exactly when we do that phase of levy project, we could be, you know, literally right by. In, in a perfect world, I see this happening as, you know, most of the work gets done in, in early '26 for the bridge construction, we could follow in right behind them, right behind them, build the rest of the levy going out to Casey's. And then by the time the Scott County portion's completed, it would be a grand opening for that whole system from one end to the other. So, to me, that seems to make a lot of sense right now.
Okay, so then, it's done, done, the project, sorry. When is that?
2027, fall of '27 is kind of what we're targeting.
I heard people ask if they can run a lot of snowmobiles on any portion of that trail.
Um, not that portion of the trail. But it'll, obviously can't stop you.
So mainly, you're not going to post that it's open to snowmobiling?
Correct, correct.
You know about side by sides?
No, no, if, there won't probably be.
Don't know, or you wouldn't allow it?
There would probably wouldn't be any kind of motorized vehicle allowed on that. And this is something that's kind of, I don't know if snowmobiles allowed on the rest of the trail in Carver County, because we would, we're following that. We did receive funds that, that really has to be plowed as well, so. It's one of the requirements, so. But, so it may be plowed, it may, it could end up being more recreational snow use too, I guess, or whatever. But, I mean, it's gonna be a 14-foot trail and there will be shoulders on it, so. Or a 10-foot trail with shoulders, I guess, it's 12, 14 feet.
I have sent out an email to Marty Walsh, who just to confirm the snowmobile stuff, just so we.
He is not pro-snowmobile, so I'm sure that it would, it's not going to be, you know, fine.
And when they build theirs, they may be under the same funding too, so.
Sure. And sometimes there's like different categories, like there's ones with spikes. I have a call with Ray thing. So some without studs, it's studs, yeah. Yeah, I've been getting similar questions.
I know there is a snowmobile trail that's there that's gonna remain in place. Long-term. Long-term, you know, talking through with the DNR, their crystal ball is eventually, once this gets built and then, you know, the connection of bringing that state trail, they may end up paving that someday too. Sooner than later is what they, the next 10 years, what they were speculating could happen just because of the demand, but that's, that's just speculation. I just, I guess, one thing I wanted to point out is that as part of the, the contractor will be required to do the precondition surveys for the vibration on the homes in the area. I think it's within 300 feet of the, of the bridge. So that's where we're, I think that's the, what we'd be doing for some of that monitoring. Where they'll go in ahead of time, make sure that they'll kind of survey it and make sure that afterwards there's no damage. So that's one thing that we're cognizant of as well, being a historic district. And I think that is it. Is that the last slide?
Oh, I'm sorry, one, just regarding Riverside Park, so the archery obviously would be impacted as part of the, of the project. So that would have to be relocated either on a temporary or permanent basis for council's consideration there. The boat launch would also be closed because that Main Street East will physically be impassable for a truck and a trailer. So just to get up over that grade change for kind of the temporary cul-de-sac, I'll call it, east of the historic bridge, so. The county's planning to do some signage, I believe, for that, saying that the nearest boat launch is in Chaska on Highway 41. And then lastly, a temporary portage signage would be in place for the, for any recreational water users in that piece of the river. So a kayaker could theoretically portage around the temporary causeway that would be in place for the river when the construction's happening.
Okay. And I mean, this is, this project has taken a lot of sources to kind of get it to fruition here. And, you know, we're, we're not, we're not asking for any funding from the city of Carver.
Perfect, we're not.
This is, is the only thing that we would look for in the agreement in the future is that if there is a desire to light the bridge in the future, that city would look at that as their, their contribution to it.
Is there gonna be, sorry, will there be any trail lighting on the Scott County side?
No.
Okay.
No, not at this time. It's not something that, you know, couldn't happen some years down the road, but right now it's.
Okay, let's get this out of the way first.
Okay.
Yeah. And in overall, this, this system is, it's not just gonna go to a parking lot on our side. You know, we have built the trail across 169. We see, we actually have another trail programmed along our County Route 14 in Louisville Township that will get you towards Shakopee or at least kind of rural Shakopee, rural part of Lake. So that eventually we'll have this system of kind of a loop that you could actually even do if you really wanted to take on a big bike ride someday or a walker or whatever, so. We, we look at it as, you know, you could, 41 to this huge loop.
Very cool, awesome. I'm gonna jump in with my questions. I am excited about this. I think it's gonna be great for Carver. Everybody in this room has heard me say, all I see is hungry and thirsty people crossing that bridge into downtown Carver.
That's what you see?
And maybe an occasional runner and biker. So let's see. This is kind of a dual purpose question, but I have questions about communications to Carver residents. I understand the need for the trees. I know that the long year gap is something to protect and to work around and that there are guardrails in place for that, and that's the reason why trees will have to come down as early as next month. But if we are taking down trees in 10 days, we need to communicate with the Carver residents tomorrow. Because I'm sure it's not any different in any of the Scott County communities, but a tree doesn't go down in the city of Carver without somebody noticing it and it potentially causing a fair amount of hurt for Carver.
Yep, and, and that's, you know, I'd be here just for the discussion and figure out how, what could people feel is the best way to communicate that? Is it a newsletter? Is it posting?
Skywriting, yeah.
We, in Carver with previous projects, we kind of done a, throw it all at the wall and see what sticks. We do community meetings, there's, for our levee project, we're doing door knocking and setting up appointments with residents. We've talked about doing door hangers for hydro flushing. We can, you know, we have a city newsletter, direct mail is probably potentially an option.
Is there time to get it in the newsletter for March?
So the thing that's tricky about this is we're not the message bearers. So I think it's gonna be tricky because we're potentially, we are gonna get calls about construction heartburn. And I don't think that we are the source of truth on that. So I think it's really important that we've got a great relationship where we can say, call John, he's terrific. You know, like he's the 24/7, night and weekend, 4th of July contact. So I worry a little bit about putting it in the Carver newsletter because it's not.
At this point, it won't, we just don't have time to get it into the March newsletter, but I would recommend mailing to the people that are kind of immediately adjacent along with social, you're not immediately adjacent, but kind of in the downtown area and then social media and website.
And so we have a standard.
We'll absolutely share the social media posts.
So we have a standard template that we use for our mailings, kind of like a trifold type of thing. We probably need a mailing list, although we have that information.
We can get that, we can help coordinate to make sure that it's the areas that we think are critical for like direct mail, so.
Okay. And so we'll, we'll have it as the, as the tree clearing for now, that's the major focus of it. But then also, hey, it's part of this larger project, kind of give them a kind of secondary that this is coming later this year. And then we'll have more information as, and we'll have our website on there.
Perfect.
And we can kind of go from there.
Yeah, that'd be great, just as long as they have a heads up because again, it's gonna be, so it's gonna be a tricky one because it's not our project and we're not the source of truth for this. So having that relationship with your staff is gonna be really, really key to this, to be able to say, here's the contact, here's who, you know. I didn't know either that they were, you know, hopefully we're not in a case of, I didn't know, but call so-and-so. It's, oh, we did see some communications from Scott County on this. Here's who you can connect with more information.
We can get that fired up this week, at least get the format, we'll get the mailing, hopefully next week we can get that out.
Perfect, okay.
I don't know the exact, exact start date, but it's gonna be sometime in March.
Okay, yeah. I think that's just great. For me, it's just really important that it's communication before tree clearing, because it's.
Want to read about it or hear the chainsaw?
Yeah, yes, so.
We'll hear the chainsaw coming in.
We may be on our side first instead of Carver's side first, so I don't know until we actually have someone on board, we don't have them on board yet.
Yeah, and that's fine, I get the logistics on your side, but just I think it's better to do that communication piece. Flooding in Riverside Park, I know we're going through a crazy time of drought, but even last year Riverside Park closed twice because of flooding. Are you guys gonna be in a place where you're nimble enough and floods aren't an immediate, you know, threat? You can kind of see them coming, but will you be in a place, if you're storing 100-foot steel beams, that you can be nimble enough to move those suckers?
I'm gonna defer to Casey.
Okay.
How are we moving camp load away?
Yeah, there'll, there'll be some requirements on how they can and cannot use the park. In fact, the project itself is in promising the park as a use to the contractor. Access to the road is part of it and the haul road and the causeway is going to be part of the project. What happens beyond that to the east is something that can be still negotiated between the contractor once he's on board and the city itself. So those types of provisions and protections can be in place through kind of a permit, I think, use from the contractor.
Okay.
But the materials, yes, they should be prepared to protect those, non-keep equipment, diesel fuel, things that would be in the river down there when floods are.
Okay. All right, let's see. The haul route and the temporary construction road is gonna be paralleling our historic water tower. It's one of the oldest, only remaining water towers that's wooden, I think, in the country. Let's make sure, like, we need to protect that at all costs. And it's right on the side of the trail because the idea was that it used to fill up the drains with water. So let's make sure we don't hit that. And I don't know if that, something needs to be in place that's a physical barrier to prevent just an errant something or another from hitting that, but it's real close to that trail.
We do plan to have a barrier, Casey, right? But there is a spot that comes down, that one of the questions that we need to know is can it, can that make sure we don't hook that? Is there a way to remove it?
Or just remove that off?
Yes, rather than that.
Yeah, okay.
So it does, shouldn't overhang, but along that whole stretch, because you've got the park, you've got the connection from Casey's that comes right onto the trail with a little bit of concrete. We expect five-foot temporary fencing to isolate the parking pedestrians from the construction access. And then in sensitive areas like that, like you can see in the highway project, temporary concrete, we're pre-gas barriers set up alongside of the water tower and some other key areas where we want to protect to make sure that equipment doesn't inherently come too close.
Okay. Okay. Let's see. Already talked about the high level of expectations for communications. Let's see, the bridge itself, is it just gonna be kind of a traditional straight bridge? Will there be a bump out or like a overlook area?
We do not have that planned in that.
City of Carver can add on if we want to pay for it.
I, Casey, I'll let you take that one.
You can hold the hard ones, Casey.
It's not currently planned. There are some structures that do midspan bump outs or at the pier, some bump outs, but that's not part of the current design.
Okay, nor will it be ever, I hear you saying.
Provisions could be put into the design for some future loading and attachments onto the bridge. We'd have to probably put some parameters around what that is and kind of put a concept point into it so we could find it into the structure and make sure the steel can accommodate it.
Okay, I'm not asking for it, I was just curious.
What's the clear width, 14?
14, all the shrub bridges will be 14.
So it's a wide, it's a wide. It's not gonna feel tight.
Okay.
So in somewhere you can usually drive up across with a, with a pole.
Stop, nothing.
Not a side by side.
And then just my last thing that I just need to say, you know, I'm worried about construction fatigue. This is gonna be a long period with activity going on downtown and between the levee and this, the projects are gonna be great when they're done. But we know from the Jonathan Carver Parkway project, from the 2019 road improvement project, even from some of our street maintenance project, that things happen, electricity goes out, gas lines get hit, you know, stuff happens. It's just part of what happens. So I just want to make sure that this is done in as tight of a timeframe as possible and, and I don't have any questions, but I just need to say it, that the city of Carver and Scott County work as closely together with our levee project and the bridge project, Merriam-Jonction Trail project, in an effort to try to use a Brent America caliber illustration. When my Aunt Nancy hosts Thanksgiving, my dad's one of six people, six kids, there's a lot of activity going on in her kitchen and somebody's washing, somebody's drying, somebody's baking, somebody's setting up the table, I'm failing.
I don't even wear any.
Just that level of coordination where there's always, you know, also, you know, especially because this is gonna be a longer construction project, I would love to always see activity there. You know, we saw 41 project take one summer. We did Jonathan Carver Parkway in one summer. For this to take a little bit longer than that for a bridge, people might be scratching their heads and asking. So a short of a time, and I know we're building in time for flooding. I just told you that it happens even years of drought and I don't doubt that we'll see it inevitably two times during this project, but as tight of a construction period as we can see would be my wish.
Yep, and that's something that's been communicated to us by staff as well, is to try to tighten that up as much as possible, try to avoid the downtown. We still see, you know, construction workers visiting the downtown, especially, you know, when their shift is done or whatever, or coming for lunch or whatever.
And we know that some individual will get lost and we will still see trucks downtown. I get it that stuff happens, but I, I'm already looking forward to, how many times during Jonathan Carver Parkway days? I can't wait for the road construction amnesia portion of this project. Kind of looking forward to the bridge levee, construction amnesia portions of this project already. But that isn't to say that I don't think that this is gonna be terrific for all of our communities, so. As long as we're on this slide, speaking of the bridge over troubled waters. So we see right there, even in this rendering, our pile of debris that starts to stack up behind those piers. So I'm sure all of your water folks have done all of their hydrology calculations in the perfect world. That does come around a curve right there and we know that the old bridge collected everything and that the railroad had to come and pick off of the bridge to get rid of that debris pileup of trees and whatever. If that happens here, who's responsible for that? Who's responsible to take those, that out?
Well, I think it was, we, and I forgot to mention that we did sign a JPA with Carver County that has some responsibilities for jointly this bridge. So probably look at that as a joint effort. But part of it was, again, maybe the angle of the bridge as well. But there, it does, it does get fairly shallow in that area as well. And I think probably still stacks up there today because there's some of the old foundations still in that river as well from the old bridge as well, so. But it's, it's something that these, these log jams are not new to us. We deal with it on 101 Bridge that we just reconstructed not that long ago, where that is a constant problem that we're always trying to address.
So we will have something in the GPA written that Carver and Scott are responsible for removing log jams?
It's, it's in there as a maintenance or whatever.
Okay. And how are we, sorry, how, I mean, we might find out what's the trigger then to say you have to, I mean, it's time to kind of remove this. Is that us complaining enough or what's the, the trigger to decide that it's high enough or there's enough debris backed up?
Good question. I don't know the exact answer, how that would kind of play out. Usually it's, it's, you know, complaints, or at least we have other log jams, complaints to our maintenance folks about it, which we'll probably start to follow along on that.
Basically, you're reading that in the JPA.
And to be clear, that's a, that's a JPA that's already been executed between Carver County and Scott County for the maintenance of that.
Okay.
Bridge.
Yeah, which involves that, and it was specifically asked, there was a question about that, that we would encounter that and I believe the answer was we'd work together on that, the counties.
How are log jams cleared? Does county staff do that? Do you have to hire a special contractor?
We may have to have special equipment or we may have to bring someone in.
That was gonna be my question, of the joint powers, who has equipment to do it?
Sometimes it's hiring someone to bring it in and get it done. So, but we'll, we'll hope for the best.
Oh, gosh.
But we would do, you know, like I said, I think, I think that one of the things that helped with the river was that we wouldn't have as many log jams with this orientation as well. They may be proven wrong, but this is what we're really hoping for here.
I would offer to the council that, you know, this wouldn't be the first county kind of infrastructure piece. If you think of Jonathan Carver Parkway, I mean, there isn't a protocol for what we do if there's an issue with the signal lights on Jonathan Carver Parkway, but if there is, we'll call the highway department with Carver County and say the signal isn't working correctly. So I would envision the process would be similar, although the level of effort is different. So I would envision the process would be similar, although the level of effort is different and significant. But, you know, I think you'll be disappointed if you're looking for in the JPA for like who to call for log jams. But it, it is, we can get you a copy with the JPA that you'll be considering on March 4th. So you can review it and then see if you feel comfortable that there's enough guidance and language in there to fill that need for you.
Okay. As long as it's in there, that's number one.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
Gordon?
I do have some questions. Oh, and that too, like, it's more of an aesthetics and obviously the hydro, hydrology and all the river stuff. But it's different when it's a safety thing, like if it's a signal light, you get response pretty fast. So it's just one of those things where you wouldn't want to wait two months to figure out who's going to do it. And by the time you wait, it's just really a bigger ordeal.
Right.
Okay. I have a question on the second slide. What do your friends at the Renaissance Festival think? And that, like, how close is that?
It goes right through their property. They own not the exact, so the Renaissance Festival grounds are here. This is 145th, that's right there. And they actually own this parcel where was the old mine as well, that they kind of overflowed stuff. So what we're doing is coming across their property, we can along their driveway that's here and then jumping onto the UP.
Yeah.
Volkebe Graveline.
Are they a partner? Are they happy for it? Are they, are they worried people are going to sneak into the Renaissance for free? Or like, what's the?
That's a great.
What's?
I think they.
Am I side by side?
Well, I think they see it as a benefit where folks from Carver could go to the Renaissance Festival and.
Have to park.
Yeah, and go to the park. So, I mean, I guess that's, that's, that's one benefit. And, you know, we're still having to go through that process. We don't have the property acquired yet. We'll have it acquired by hopefully June, but it's a process we're going through and we have to buy and ease it from.
Okay. And then with that Louisville Swamp Trailhead, are you adding more parking spots? Or I guess are you adding parking spots anywhere on your side?
We are not adding any parking at this time. Something that we've talked with Fish and Wildlife out, even offered to pave their parking lot to kind of designate spots, but they're not interested in that. They want to keep it a little more natural.
Okay.
So we do own some parcels when we built, they're little kind of skinny parcels, but there might be opportunity for some additional parking along Red Rock Drive on our side.
And then when the contractors are, you know, setting up and they have all the access to all those areas and they, I'm actually being serious, but I'm trying to like not laugh. But they use water for whatever various things. How do, how do they hook up water? Like, did we just give them?
Like water for what use?
Like what, if you're mixing mud, like cement or concrete or, you know, whatever.
I'm going to the rich guy, he's probably.
It should be pretty limited for what they need up there. Sometimes they'll use that for dust mitigation and that'll be trucked in if needed. Yeah, maybe with the haul road, there might be some need just to knock down a little.
Yeah, if they needed to buy water from the city, we have that basically. It's a water buddy, basically a water vending machine for bulk use.
Okay.
But the concrete is pre-messed.
The cement mixers are all ready to go and the major halls are there all set. Okay. That's why I just heard. That's what Andy does. Cement and concrete, because the concrete is when it's mixing, the cement when it's dry. What I really want to avoid is, just it's more the aesthetics of it, is, you know, there's the Public Works building right there. It's having contractors just go help themselves to water only because of the aesthetics. It's a sensitive subject and.
We don't have water.
Look at, like, somebody's getting free water.
We don't have water. That won't be we have water in that building any longer, if you're asking.
It's just a hose for the gardens.
Gardens, that's all that's a hose.
Yeah, yeah, they wouldn't be filling up.
Yeah, there'd be portable mess rooms up there as well, so.
Okay. And then I have one question. Who's Meridian? What's the name?
Merian.
Or Merriam, yeah.
Merriam Junction.
Is it Merial?
Yeah, Merriam Junction.
With an M. Merial, okay. Who's Merial?
So that goes back to, there was actually a town out here, it was called Merriam Junction where the rails, there was like a little general store, post office. So, you know, it's long gone now, probably disappeared 100 years ago. But, so there's stuff in our historical society.
Okay.
So as part of this trail, we'll probably have some informational things, kind of of the area, the valley, some of the history area. So, yeah, that, that was right there. And the person themselves was like a land developer, speculator type, type of person, so.
Those were my questions, thank you.
Eric?
So I'm going to reveal I don't have an engineering or hydrology degree. And most of the questions have an answer, but around bridge piers, so because there's a propensity to have a jam and backup, does that change anything having to do with our levee engineering? Does it overdrive flood levels of that 22? Could it impact that?
So we've actually been looking at the river hydraulics kind of in tandem with each other. So they've been doing modeling as they're latest changes to the river hydraulics with their, the pier, adding the piers.
Yeah.
And then we've actually modeled what our future levee embankment will be because we're actually going to be shifting the levee a little bit closer to the river in this area. So we've looked at them combined and are proving that there's, there's no, it's called a no-rise condition to the river hydraulics. So it's proving that you're not going to cause a hydraulic jump in the river, so.
That's it. You know, just looking at the bridge itself, how about things like vandalism? People love to tie padlocks to bridges. Is this really, I mean, it's a problem and you have to cut them off all the time. The railings along here, the anti, well, yeah, are they designed to prevent people from doing that?
Well, I guess all I can say is that it'd be a maintenance issue that we'll have to address. And the, the minor maintenance like that, painting or graffiti removal, what's probably on Scott County parks to remove?
The sub-bridge railings have been redesigned to prevent that, that's what came to mind, yeah.
I don't know, Casey has any thoughts on that?
Yeah, currently right now it's just the state standards would be three-quarter pickets, vertical pickets, four and a half.
Well, if it became the city of love, that's fine.
Your wedding around the bridge.
I, before I started this project, I was in Pittsburgh for like a, a little bit and really, you know, I thought people would go for the yellow steel, but I guess that didn't happen.
No. Hard pass. If you leave this meeting with one takeaway. Would you recommend arneet to put the trees? Anything else?
Yeah, I know it's a great project, I seen on the Carver County Park side, so I'm very familiar. I just had, I guess, compliment that it seems like you guys have a great working relationship. I think the idea of moving the truck traffic out of downtown was a great, great idea. And I hope that seems like it's going to work. So I think that was a great compromise.
And, and, you know, we had a lot of discussion and we know that it's going to cost us a lot more money to put it where we're going to put it, the, the traffic. Because it's always easier for access for, for contractors in and out to be right there. And then for them to manage the traffic one-way direction, they don't really have a lot to maneuver around in. We know it's going to cost a lot more money. But we're, we're trying to be a good partner and try to avoid impacting the downtown.
Yeah, no, I really appreciate that. And then on, on the Scott County side, maybe, how, how far do you have the trail system going the other way to sort of the, if it's just all parked? Does that, is that orange line down there, is that a part of the trail?
That'll be, that'll be the future trail. We actually have that programmed within the next five to 10 years.
Okay. Is there an existing trail that goes basically north kind of around?
In the interest of time, can we give it just to the Merriam-Jonction project?
Sure. Okay. Yeah, I guess that was it. Oh, and then how, how soon are you thinking that you'd have your contractors selected, right? A lot of our timing is depending on that.
It'll be this summer sometime.
Okay.
So it's out for bid right now?
No. It won't be till probably June.
Okay.
May to June at the earliest. But it's, so we have some time to kind of keep the coordination going here.
So as far as the trajectory going north, I don't know about the county system, but the state, state trail does connect in at the southern bridge with a small footpath. So, there's some connectivity.
So then on the, would the tree clearing be separate from the main project then?
It is, it's separate. We're, we're doing it independently contractor.
Okay, so that, that is relatively firm then on this time.
Yep, in March here.
Okay. That was it now.
I have one more. I believe it's probably for you. It has to do with.
It's supposed to be hard one.
It's hydrology, so, so when we took out the old bridge, the piers obviously slowed down the velocity of the river coming through. Once we took that out, we saw that it, the trajectory of the water went farther down the riverside and eroded a lot of the park off. Like 30 feet fell into the river. Have, have you done your studies to make sure that as we put these piers back in, whatever that changes, that it's not going to bring that water slamming into just a different section and we're losing more of the park?
There's a lot of focuses upstream, rise conditions and everything up. I don't know that we, I'd have to go back and talk to our engineers and see if they've done evaluations downstream. Is that typical, do you know?
So, that's a really good question and that's something that Todd and I are going to be looking at really closely when we do the levee project in this area. Because we want to try to deflect that water right at the end before the levee will curve and go north. We want to try to build that embankment out to kind of re-channelize that flow. So it's probably more of a levee item since it is, you know, downstream of this, but.
Oddly enough, it was the logs that was causing.
It slowed the water, for sure.
It pushed the water toward more towards the Scott County side and when the logs left. So I, you know, it's certainly something that we can look at and unpack in the course.
And if you have any of that information, have they done anything past the river? Or the bridge, I mean.
The southern side?
To the southern side.
I didn't really talk about it, but we're doing considerable amount of stream bank stabilization on our side of the river because we have severe erosion in places, so we're trying to keep the sediment out of the river where it's, you know, it is a steep cliff in some areas because the road is so bad.
All right. I don't think we have any other questions. Thank you. Appreciate you taking the time to go do that investigation. Steve, this is the 10-6-17. All right. Up next is the Bluff Park parking lot. Thank you.
Thanks.
You guys two are welcome to stay.
I'm going to get out here.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. So this is an issue that involves Bluff Park, so you can see from the aerial Carver Bluff Parkway and Carver Creek Circle. During times of heavy use, the parking facilities at Bluff Park are unable to accommodate the amount of visitors in the park. And so from time to time, based on the event, residents or the neighborhood will notice parking along Carver Bluff Parkway. Not on the street, but actually they'll kind of hop the curb in the park, in the right-of-way areas and then along Carver Creek Circle as well. So this has been, you know, I would say an issue that's been ongoing for several years, if not decades at this point. It came to a head with an event that occurred this past athletic season. And so the Parks team, which is a mix of admin and public services folks, started kind of brainstorming the concept and primarily through, I give most of the credit here to Paul Schultz. If not all of it, kind of coming up with a concept to have public services install themselves a, I call it an auxiliary parking lot. So gravel, there's 10 existing stalls, so this would add 19 that kind of on the south side and then another 24 new stalls on the north side. So this would be kind of spring work. You can see, I would note, it doesn't impact the fields other than the most northerly field is turned 45 degrees or 90 degrees, I guess. It'd be running east and west rather than north, south. The, the blue line indicates where the soccer football upright is, if you wanted kind of a de-location for location. So estimating about a $6,000 cost to construct the area, which would come out of the operations and maintenance budget for Parks in 2024. So wanted to take feedback from the council before the staff worked with the project in the spring.
Isn't there a fence that runs along about where those 19 stalls are? That extends behind the football upright?
No.
Oh, okay.
There is a fence along that parking lot curb.
Correct.
Okay. That doesn't extend that far. Well.
And you can see, I mean, this is, if you can zoom in a little bit.
That's what I'm thinking of right there.
Oh.
There's a fence there. Okay.
You showed the crystal where you're talking about? I'm not sure.
I think.
There's fencing along here.
Okay.
And then there's fencing here.
I think the fence extends beyond.
Yeah, there's a fence right here.
Okay.
But it doesn't go that full length.
All right, so it's not, that fenced area there, that's not used for anything now that it impact?
No.
Field play, okay.
You can see kind of the makeout of this soccer field here.
The soccer field, but if there's a football upright there, does there need to be, can it be behind it?
Yeah, that football upright, I don't think it's been.
It has never been used if it comes out. I have never once.
In 20 years, it's been used.
I took a right-hand look coming down the hill. That's what I was asking.
The youth football association uses the fields at Ironwood Park. There are no scheduled football games at this park.
Sure.
I think for six grand, it's a heck of a deal that has a parking there because it is a problem.
It's a huge problem, Carver Creek Circle, that is to try and get an emergency vehicle, a fire truck up there on both sides. This, Public Works thinks this works for me, go for it. And I think we've all seen the emails of the people who are parking like overhanging driveways by 4 to 6 feet. It gets dicky and I think it's just a better experience for the Carver residents in that area and the folks who are coming to our community for this sportsball events. And we made some changes to the parking lot for Hill Drive to accommodate, you know, the events in Community Park. We need to be doing this too. I just have one little question. So then in, when we're looking at the other map, there we go. So we're entering with the little, this little square here, right here, is this where they enter in?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that going to be enough to accommodate two cars passing each other? I think that would probably be important if someone's coming and going at the same time.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea. I support it. You said $6,000 from maintenance fund or?
Operations maintenance, yeah.
What is like the annual budget? Is it like over $24,000? Like, I just wouldn't want to find out that we just drained it.
I can look that up and get it back to you. Then that, I would say this is, the impetus from this was coming from the public services team. So I, I'll get the number, but it's certainly not a, a draining event. They're, they're pretty knowledgeable about their budget and not wanting to like spend it all in one spot, if you will. But I'll, I can look that up during our break and get it back to you.
And then doing the, the work themselves, that's what's saving us unusual. That's basically, that's just.
Two nails.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts?
No, it seems like a graded map with that's adding 43 stalls over previously, 43 more. Well, 19 plus 34, right?
There's 10 existing, 10 existing, yeah, so.
I thought that said 24, sorry.
Yeah, that, that's a great, yeah. Especially if there's parking issues that's great use.
We'd be able to strip it in any way?
It's gravel, so.
That's my thought. My only concern is, is in theory, it's 43 stalls, but you know, what happens to parking lots when there's? That's my thought, my only concern is, is in theory, it's 43 stalls, but you know, what happens to parking lots when there's snow and you can't see the lines, so, you know.
People aren't used to parking at Target in the winter, they'll figure it out.
I mean, it's, it's probably not going to be used in the winter.
I'm just saying, they'll go without lines, I mean, but even if we get 35 additional cars in there, it's a lot. Love it.
Great, thank you.
City managers report?
I don't have any country reports.
Council requests, anybody?
Do we have an opportunity to talk about that survey?
That was last meeting.
It is, but.
So, yeah, we'll just.
I wasn't sure if we should do it in here or in there.
We can do it in there. Any other questions?
Just have on the sink trail, have we got anything on that?
Oh, yeah, the public services staff removed.
Oh, great.
I would say 90% of the items or one old bus that's kind of buried up to its neck, if you will, that's going to have to stay in place unless the city wanted to advocate spend.
Let's make kids make up stories about how they got there.
We have a long note here, I have a picture of it on my camera roll, a couple of years ago.
Okay, great.
All right, if there are any city council questions, I have a motion to adjourn, public motion to adjourn, motion by council member Sarah.
I'll say.
Second by council member Edgerson, all of you ever say aye?
Aye.
Close same side, motion passes.